Ms. Leah is in the fifth grade at the Fairview Elementary School. And she has expressed to her mother and has expressed to myself as in our visit around City Hall that she aspires to be the President of the United States. Her interest here this evening is to see how meetings are run. And I invited her to be a part of us to encourage her to keep on seeing that goal through. So we want to encourage her and we thank her mother for being proactive in setting up the meeting and allowing her to get the opportunity this evening. So this is Ms. Leah and we're glad to have her with us. We'll move on. I'll call the meeting to order. The first thing on the agenda is the prayer and the pledge. Ms. Leah will be leading us in the pledge this evening. We'll pray first.
Please bow. Dear Father, we thank you for this day that you've created for us. Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Father, we ask that you would guide these many women as they undertake the business of the city, that their decisions would be in the best interest of the citizens. Father, we ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
(Inhales) Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may have a seat. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Approved.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. We have Ms. Deanna Inman. Would you please approach the podium? You have three minutes to share your concerns. Welcome.
My concerns are with the businesses in Fairview that I have Fairview Stop &amp; Save Market and proud owner of it. What I come to you is that I've spoke with several of the businesses. I haven't been able to get ahold of all of them, but in speaking with them, we would like to get together and meet with officers and maybe set up some training. I spoke with Terry Harris and he said that that's already in the works and I'm happy to hear that. Also in saying that, I would also like everyone to know that just as much as this is a concern for you guys about the underage selling of alcohol and tobacco, it also is for owners. We don't take it lightly. I know several businesses are now, when someone comes to buy, if they're underage and we catch them, we hold their driver's license and then ask them to stay until the police get there. So we are calling this in, but I think that a lot of you guys don't realize that in saying that, that a lot of times there's, other than the police coming and talking to them, they're being let go. Now, I know that's probably their right, but I think that the big problem is, is that we're held to a standard of that it's costing us dearly and we want to be in compliance, but you know, when things get busy and everything, you try to your best ability and I'm not going to say that it will never happen. I hope and pray to God that it doesn't. But I want everyone to know that this isn't something that I want to happen at our store or in our community and that, you know, everyone wants to work together and make this a better community, but I really think that it's going to have to start with, you know, pretty much like a three-strikes program to where, you know, if we call, the children are picked up and that there's consequences to this, to where whether it's their driver's license being taken away after the third time. But we have the same kids coming. They're not just coming into our store. They're approaching our customers out in our parking lot and asking them to buy. We have security cameras and we're able to see that. A lot of times our customers will come in and notify us and at that time we call the police and ask for them to come in and wait for them. But it is a big problem and I don't think that everybody realizes that it's not just on our side. It's also on the side of the parents, that, you know, everybody is going to have to work together to get it to be totally stopped. Not just, you know, we can't be the police. We can't be, you know, there for everything, but what we can do is we can call and hopefully that between us calling the police and the police coming in and making them being held accountable for this, that eventually it's just known that you don't do it or this is the consequences that not only that we will get, but now you're liable for it also. And I just would like to let everybody know that we are working really hard and we don't want to be the seedy businesses. We want to be the businesses that are safe places for our children to go to and that we're all working to grow our community. So that's all that I had to say and I appreciate you guys letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have on citizens' comments, Mr. Richard.
Cottler.
Cottler. Thank you, sir. On Overby Road, please approach the bench. You have three minutes to state your concerns. Welcome.
I can't even say good afternoon in three minutes. Good afternoon anyway and thank y'all for letting me come up here and speak. I only got maybe a couple of questions, maybe run into three. I don't know. This annexation of Givens Court and Overby Road. How far down Overby Road do we anticipate going?
To the property is my understanding. Don, would you like to come in on that?
That's correct. Just to the.
Just to the Biata property.
To the edge of the Biata property. Okay. Good enough. I'm stable on that. Second question. The annexation part of the property down there, is this to entail tonight being discussed about the proposed building of housing and stuff out there? Is this annexation, just to annexate property back there?
Don, will you address him, please?
This is just the annexation. It don't have anything to do with the development. The resounding of the property that is, will have its second and final reading on April 14th.
Fourth. I think I remember hearing from my last meeting, April the 4th, and I noticed in the paper yesterday that they had a public notice in there, which for my failing eyesight, it was printed so small that you can't read. How usually need doing that, Mr. Johnson?
I made it.
I seen you walk in. Anyhow, I was between the thought. The property there that we're in question, or that public notice that they had in there, like I said, it was so small, I couldn't read it and couldn't understand half of what I was reading, but how accurate is that names of people, property and border line and everything is that supposed to be? Could it come from somebody in one of the offices there? I don't know whether they've taken the aerial photo boundaries there, whether they've actually went back and surveyed it or what, but I was just wondering about that.
I would have to look at the.
And how accurate the names are for, because that notice has a lot of names in there that the people, people no longer exist.
Well, those are taken from the deeds that have been recorded.
Okay, they've been recorded, but they have been resold.
But that was, what's in there was the most accurate that we found or the surveyor that.
Did you check the county up there?
Well, the surveyor has to pull those deeds when they do the legal descriptions of the property.
Yeah, my question is, how accurate is that supposed to be?
I couldn't tell you.
Is it supposed to be 100%? 50% or 5%?
I couldn't tell you, but I didn't do the survey.
You know what I mean? I figured somebody should know what.
It's supposed to be 100% accurate. It's supposed to be 100% accurate.
Okay. Then it's not. Well, you got people like the LD Lampnick, which is my former brother-in-law, who deceased and passed on, and that piece of property has been sensually sold to someone else and somebody, somebody who tried to buy it, I ain't going to quote who or how much, but it would have some connection to do with this property back behind the house, but somebody else just had bid it and the person on that and sitting there. And I know that that piece is in Mr. Brewer's property. Some of you people here may know Mr. Brewer, where the Biottas live now down there. That has since Mr. Brewer had it on it, that has changed hands twice. I didn't see, I didn't see their name in there either being bordered on any of that property down there, which they checked right up there against it. I mean, right? They're the reason for the problem that we got. That piece of property, and I'm not saying they, I take that back. That property is the reason we got the problems that we're having such discussions we have and what do you, I mean, some of y'all don't want to believe it or don't believe it or think that, some of us don't know what we're, maybe what we're talking about, but anything mechanically does eventually break down.
Does it what?
Anything that works as a mechanical type thing, like a car engine or.
My hip.
Like his hip there and my back, it goes out. It wants all that, but it's not, it's not mechanical. These hips and the back are not mechanical. I'm talking about like a car engine, something like that where you have to maintain maintenance on something. It's not a matter of win or it's not a matter of ill, if it's a matter of win, because they do break down. We had a good side discussion on that out here once before and I heard some rebuttal about it on y'all's last meeting, which I'm not going to go there because I'll get too long on the soapbox up here and time will run out.
And you're specifically speaking about something mechanical on the property or on the subdivision of the development? Is that what I'm picking up?
The sewer system itself is what.
Okay. I just wanted to see what your point was.
Right. The sewer system itself was a, it's a known fact that it's been checked out on two different places. And one of them is, from what the board said, is stable, is good and works good. But the other one, they use well school down here. They have to pump it sometime every two weeks, depending. And it was said, you know, because the school overloaded, got more students and more personnel in there than what they had anticipated. Well, that's the same thing is going to happen back there. It's going to overload. I mean, you get some people, three or four people, three or four families live in the same house and that's going to cause excess water and excess liquids to go into these septic systems that they got. I don't object, I don't really know and don't understand all that I think that I know about that, but I just do know that common sense and do know mechanical stuff does break down.
Okay.
And my three minutes of public's passed, I'm gone.
That's okay. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Cottler, but I do want to address your concern about the property owners being 100% correct. Could I ask you to please talk with City Manager Hyatt and address that and that way he can stand and say exactly what needs to be done, because if it does need to be 100% correct and it's.
Did you say state?
If you can speak with City Manager Hyatt either this evening or make an appointment with him as soon as possible, because I would think at that point, if it's to be 100% correct and it's not, there may be something we need to do about that.
Okay. But it is in there that the Brewer family that did, that once previously owned this property that's in question. Now, he was the original. I imagine somebody else owned it before he did, but when I moved into the area, he was the owner down there and then he later built another house up on Overby Road, kind of all cabin type house. But he owned it in a family, I think the name of Griffin or something like that.
The details may not be the point. The point being is if it's not 100% correct and a city manager said it should or that's what's expected, what I would maybe allow you to do is share with him some concerns where maybe he can research that, because if it needs to be 100%, maybe we do need to get with the county courthouse and make that happen for a rerun.
Is this Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cottler.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for letting me speak. That'll be Monday, sir, before I give this off. That's my call. Okay. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is awards and recognition.
May there are no staff awards or recognitions this evening.
Any from the board?
Your right.
Item number five is public announcements.
Just want to remind everyone of the emissions testing on Tuesdays at the Highway 96 Fire Station.
I'd like to also highlight that the Fairview Area Chamber of Commerce and joint effort with the Fairview Community Action Partnership will be hosting the ninth annual Business Expo in conjunction with the first annual Job Fair on March 19th, 4 to 8, at the Fairview Middle School. And the technology students are hosting the event, so we're having a collaboration with many people trying to work not only in promoting the businesses around the Fairview area, but also work with the public that may be seeking jobs and may be looking to find better jobs. So if you have an interest in that or would like to share that, that's a public announcement. Everyone's invited, March 19th, Fairview Middle School, 4 to 8 p.m. Next item is six, approval of the minutes for the February 7th, 2013 meeting.
Moved to approve.
I have a couple of changes. Ms. Teresa, under O Business 7A. And I might be corrected. I don't see Keith here. In your stats, it says Park Director Keith Paisley. Is that his current title?
Different name.
Also, I would like to request, there was a lot of discussion on Section 1. In highlight, I mean, it looks like it's for the purpose of future reference if needed. There was a lot of discussion in 1. It's really an abbreviated version. I read a recommendation that's not commented on. Staff spoke, that's not commented, well, yeah, commented on some. Mr. Hyatt spoke and there was another part there before my motion was made that I spoke to why. So those key points there, I think, are very vital. If you could relook at that, I'd appreciate it. And I thought there was a, I thought there was a typo, but that's it. Any other corrections or deletions of the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'd like at this time, due to Leah's very important social calendar as well as school calendar, to allow her to exit at this time. Would y'all please give her a round of applause of encouragement? Moving on, O Business 7A, second and final reading of Bill 2013-1.
It's an ordinance to annex certain property located at 7355 Overby Road herein described below and to incorporate same within the corporate boundaries of the City of Fairview, Tennessee belonging to Kathy E. Biata. All the properties proposed for annexation lies within the City of Fairview, Tennessee's growth boundary. Move for approval.
At this time that we inquire what WADC has presented, there was concerns about the.
Matt Biata's here. He can answer those questions. I believe he.
Good evening.
Sent each one of y'all the letter that he had received from WADC.
You might want to recap that for the public, if you would, please.
Okay. I unfortunately don't have a copy of that letter, but I had sent it to Don. And basically, what we had done was a preliminary sewer report and basically the letter stating that, you know, I'm sorry, I'm kind of scrambled getting here late. Basically, the sewer that we're proposing was recommended by them. We're actually using their engineering consultants that they recommended. What we would have to do as we move forward is work on construction documents, which we plan to do, so.
Any questions? Comments?
Do you have that letter? Don, I could read it out loud. So I'm not better prepared.
Well, helpful if we took a moment and let Don go get a copy of the actual letter.
Yes. One minute recess. Hurry.
Sorry for the poor paraphrasing.
Oh, I can. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes.
Well, Matt, while we're waiting, I've got a couple of things and just share with you the two concerns that have been passed on to me.
Okay.
Actually, it's three. The first one is traffic coming in and out on Overby Road. And I know that as part of your plan, that you will work with the Planning Commission and have to be approved. Y'all will have to, just like Walmart's having to.
Yes, as I understand, as we move forward, we will have to do a traffic study before we would get final approval of the subdivision. And whatever the traffic study, you know, whatever their findings come up with, we'll be happy to comply with.
Okay. The second question that keeps being asked of me is the quality of the housing and the price range of the housing. And I know it's a very generic term, but there's been a concern that it's not going to be of the value that would support the houses that are already there on Overby Road and on Walker Road behind it, that my understanding was that, well, let me put it this way. What value of homes do you intend to build in that subdivision? Based upon today's standard?
Yeah.
I know it's a long-term project, but.
Really, a little background, we're the developer, myself and my family, we've custom home builders in the area. You know, our intention is we will have an architectural review board. We're planning to require hardy board, brick and stone. No vinyl is what we would propose. Obviously, a lot of that right now is going to be dictated by what the market, you know, will push for. Right now, I've started two homes in Leverett Meadows that seems to be selling right now around $200,000 price range. You know, this is going to be, with the absorption rate of Fairview, trying to be optimistic, this is going to be an eight to 10-year build-out. So the price range, I mean, we're, you know, it could start at 200,000, could start at 250. Where it ends up, you know, we're going to push the market as high as we can. And from a developer's standpoint, the more, the higher price homes is the more we could sell lots for. So it is in our best interest to push those prices as high as they could go. I think with the architectural review board, what we're trying to do here is something unique to the area and also unique to the county. So I, I mean, I could show examples. Actually, you could go to.
The concern that was expressed to me was that the housing was going to be of such value that it would detract from the houses that were already there. And I don't think that 200,000, I don't know what those houses are, but I would think that a house of 200,000 in Fairview is going to be a fairly well-made house, so.
I agree with that.
Is that including the lot cost?
Yes, sir. Yes. We started posting pictures of kind of the inspiration of the subdivision, what we're trying to, the overall feel that we're trying to convey in there. I think once you start to see what our inspiration is, you know, you'll start to understand what we want to do there. We don't want to build a vinyl village, as I like to call it. We want to really keep the quality there and push it as high as we could go, as I said, so.
Okay. And the last item, and you're going to address part of it here with the sewer system and stuff, there's been some concern and then there's a, I guess there's a creek that runs behind the property that people have contacted me about and they're real concerned about the contamination of that creek. And if you, after you finish reading the letter, if you could talk a little bit about, you know, the system and that particular part of it, which seems to be a real concern. If I lived on Walker Road, I would be concerned about it, too.
The other, I'll plug that website one more time. I'd like to be as transparent as possible. I've posted on that website the preliminary sewer report that I've paid for, which was done by the engineer that the Water Authority of Dixon recommended. It's about 60 pages long. It's open to everybody who wants to read it. I'll post this letter as well and I'll continue to post everything public. I mean, I believe in the system, so. Okay, the letter, this is from Michael K. Adams, the Executive Director of the Water Authority of Dixon. Dear Mr. LeVorn, the Water Authority of Dixon County has received preliminary plans from Mr. Matt Biata for the above referenced proposed residential development. The developer indicates his desire to construct a decentralized wastewater collection treatment system to facilitate the sanitary wastewater generated by this development. This letter hereby provides notice to the City of Fairview that this type system is acceptable to Water Authority of Dixon County, provided that all plans and construction meet WADC and State of Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation specifications. Originally, a plan was submitted June 2012. That was the preliminary report I referenced earlier. However, any prior approvals have expired and a subsequent review will be required before consideration of final approval for construction and/or execution of a subdivision plat. Provided all construction meets WADC and TDEC standards, the wastewater system may be dedicated to Water Authority of Dixon County to own, operate and maintain. And he says, if you have any questions, concerns, feel free to contact them. So as we, where we're at right now in the planning phase is still the preliminary. Once we hopefully get approval from you guys, we move forward and start working on construction documents. When we begin the construction documents, that's when the sewer engineer will begin the proper sewer construction documents, which is what he references here, that before they approve, you know, they're not going to approve it on a preliminary review. The review was more to test the samples. We did soil tests. We had a soil scientist come out there. This system is similar to a septic tank system in a sense of soil is very important and we checked the soil. The soil there is great for this system. The property also is heavily treed. Trees love this affluent, the treated affluent that will be drained into the drainage areas. As for the creek that you referenced, basically what this system does is, I'll try to give a short, non-technical, every house will be outfitted with a septic tank that's like a, I don't know if you guys are familiar with grinder pumps. A grinder pump was used heavily in Fairview in subdivisions. A grinder pump is basically, it would chew up sewage from a home and send it to a pump station and then be pumped to a centralized system, which would be what we have on Flat Rock Creek and the other one escapes me right now. So every home will be outfitted with a septic tank. As an affluent point rises, affluent will be sent to this onsite treatment area. There it will be treated five different times through a sand filtration system. The way it's treated, there is no difference in state specifications of the treatment level as there is with a centralized system. The oversight is the same. So really, the main difference with this system is that instead of having it centralized and treating sewer for 8,000 people, it's just going. and treating sewer for 8,000 people, it's just going to be treating the sewer for this Once it's treated five times through the sand filtration system, it'll go to a pump, which will be sent out to specific drainage areas. And again, on the website, I have the preliminary drawing that shows these drainage areas. None of, we've specifically located none of these drainage areas by creek or water. There is one, it's kind of hard to reference without a map of it, but the creek, the main part of the creek is towards the back of the property. The, we have a drainage, most of the drainage is centrally located, I guess is the easiest way to say it. Before it goes to these drainage fields, after it's already been treated, it also gets, goes through a UV ultraviolet light. There, it kills any remaining bacteria. And in addition, which we're doing above and beyond, is we're also going to treat it with a shot of chlorine. And that will eliminate any smell and just kill any additional bacteria, anything that there may be. I've been told by the engineer that this is very close to drinking water once it's treated. Will I drink it if I have to? But I don't think it's going to come to that. The great thing with this system is it also seconds as onsite irrigation. And that's very important for the subdivision. What we're trying to do is protect the natural resources of the property. And I think right now, we have around 40 acres. We believe upon final construction documents, we could get that up to 45 acres of green open space. And that's what this water will be taking care of. So instead of digging wells and bringing water into water open common areas, we're going to use the water that we recycle onsite. And I'm actually quite proud of that. I think that's a, in a world of green living, I think that's something to applaud, but I might be biased on that. So again, as we move forward, we'll have better details. As we have construction documents, we'll have better details. I had written a quick little essay called, I believe I titled it, "Ten Questions of a Decentralized System." I use references and resources to show the claim of what this system's about. It has been, it's actually heavily touted by the EPA, and they're big proponents of it. So again, all that's onsite, I mean, on my website. In that document, you could go, and there's easy web links to federal documents that refer to the system. And I think that could make everybody feel at ease about it. And, you know, anyone has any further questions, I can answer it. The engineer's not here, Will, but Will is actually well-versed in this as well, since being from the Murfreesboro area, this is what Rutherford County has used since, I believe, 2000 is when they first implemented a system. So our own city engineer is well-versed in decentralized systems, and he's actually probably be a better resource than myself.
Matt? Oh, sorry.
I was just going to thank you for answering my question. I know I kind of caught you unprepared, but I...
No problem. I'm still, I was working late tonight and running around, so.
I appreciate the detail and the information. Commissioner Kara?
Apparently, you've gone to great detail to research this and be transparent, like you said. And we know about the website now. But would you be willing, as this moved along, to meet with the property owners and maybe get somebody from Dixon Water Authority to just kind of have a question-answer?
From, yeah, from what I understand, and maybe we could set this up for a Planning Commission meeting or something. As I understand, the Water Authority of Dixon, I believe Michael Adams, I'm looking for Don for help here, but we just talked about this in our last Planning Commission meeting, where they said they would be happy to come and discuss the system. And I know, too, the system was discussed in the Economic Development Board, where Director, or I'm sorry, Dr. Sandra Dudley discussed it. So again, I'll be happy to be there, but I'm by no means, I didn't go to school for that long to be able to discuss in technical detail. But that's what, again, I referenced, that little 10-question essay I wrote. I just tried to make it where you could read something in five minutes and understand why you should feel at ease with this system. One thing that I will say is I know people were, are concerned about the creek. Actually, everybody over there is on a septic tank, and that, the septic tanks actually have a better chance of failing and ruining that creek than this system. That's, you know, I'm not trying to take a swipe at septic tanks, but it's basically the oversight that's involved. A septic tank, very little oversight on the front end. All you really do is you get, they tell you where to place it, and then they're gone. They will do a small inspection before you cover it up, but then that's it. And it's up for the landowner to take care of it and properly maintain it. A lot of septic tanks don't have alarms on there. They don't know when they're failing until it's too late, until there's sewage on the surface and they smell it. By that time, rain runoff, and that could easily carry it to the creek that they're concerned about. So just kind of want to point that out.
Other comments or questions?
Could you explain the basic premise behind the Architectural Review Board?
Being a home builder in Fairview and my family, I say I've been building homes for 18 years. I have in some sort of way. I started young. My father was a bit of a slave driver, as far as picking up brick with wheelbarrows and all that. But ever since I was young, I've had a, an idea of how I think it should be done. And that's what, you know, years of, years of work is cultivating into this. And basically, I have access to, and I'll say Westview, I mean, West Haven. I love that subdivision. They, the reason it is so nice is they pay attention to the small stuff and the details. And that's what we're going to do here, is we'll set up. And I actually could give you, and I'll post that on the website as well, I have a preliminary kind of guidelines, design guidelines, if you will. Talking, going back to the price point, that, you know, Fairview, and I just took someone through our subdivisions today, you know, five years ago, we were building our average homes $350,000 and up. That market right now does not exist in Fairview. If someone came to me and said, "Build a spec home for over $300,000," I'll do it with their money. You know, it's just not there. I would like, you know, if, as things move forward, say we're ready to start the end of this year, first part of next year, I mean, I would like to start this at 250. The thing that I'm going to focus on is price per foot, not necessarily the overall price of the home. You know, you build a 1,200-foot house for $120, $130 a foot, that's what I'm going to be focused on, is the per-foot price. Because overall, that's what will sustain the subdivision. The great thing with these conservation subdivisions is the old style of developing and designing subdivisions is you would have one area that's, you know, I don't want to say affordable, but affordable houses, a mid-grade section and maybe a high-grade section. And all these were developed at different times. This type of subdivision, and again, I'll reference West Haven, what's great about West Haven is you cut in a road, and on that same street, you could have a $200,000 house and a $350,000 house. The idea of the design is they will be front porch homes. We're trying to capture that old town feel, maybe of old Mississippi towns or old New England towns, where people, you know, talk to your neighbors and try to, try to really push community. That's one part with the green space and that. This is also, being a conservation subdivision, it's also called a walkable subdivision. There's going to be sidewalks everywhere. We're going to have a central town, I would like to make it a town center, but it will, you know, it's not going to be that big of a subdivision. But we'll have a central place. I mentioned I'd like to have a little convenience market, a pool, house, all this. Anyways, I'm kind of rambling here, but the architectural of the homes is supposed to lend to this overall feel of community. So front porches, unique designs. I say unique, it's basically, will be a classic American style, but with some detail on it. And I'd rather, I'd rather make roof lines and the exterior of the homes simple, but use quality materials. You know, I'd like to see these homes look good in 50 years and not just throw them up and be done with it. I'm going to be on the Architectural Review Board. I'll write the rules. And so it's not, I'm not just, you know, blowing smoke.
Who else, who else is going to comprise that board?
Well, we are currently looking at architects. And being a small business owner, I like to feel that I could do everything, but I need to relinquish some of that. But it will, everything will be, will have oversight. There is an architect, and I'll say his name, Preston Shea, he's out of Franklin. He actually helped design initially West Haven. Seeing his stuff, he's the kind of stuff we want to do. But that's basically what we'll have. So if a builder wants to build in there, his plans will have to be approved by this architect. And in reality, I'll probably have this architect design most of the homes in there. And if someone wants to use their plan, they probably have to pay a fee or something and get their plan approved. But it's going to be very controlled. The way I look at subdivision is it's a product. And the more control you have over the product, the better the product's going to be. So really, A to Z and beyond, I'd like to, the way we write our HOA regulations is going to be very strict. Again, taking from West Haven, they have about a three-inch binder of just fences that are approved to use in their neighborhood. We're going to be, I mean, it's going to be landscape, fences. I mean, it's going to be strict. And the overall reason is, on an investment point, is that we feel the more control it is, the better the vision is created and followed through on. In 10 years, maybe we could be selling five, $600,000 houses in there. You know, we're going to set the table to accommodate whatever the market goes. I don't know where, I mean, what I referenced earlier, where five years ago, the average home was $350,000. Now it's, you know, under 200,000. So we're hoping it gets back up to 350 again.
Other comments?
Well, with that, with that being said, how will that Architectural Board that you've spoke of, that could be the first in county's history, work with the city and the PUD that your subdivision will be required to follow? Because not only will all this be taken care of on the front end, the square footage, minimum square footage requirement will be handled by the City of Fairview. They'll, we'll decide what that'll be, not price, but minimum square footage that you would have to follow, that Architectural Board would have to follow. Also, building materials. Once, once it gets a stamp, this board right here votes on that PUD, there's no vinyl. That means there's no vinyl 10 years from now. You kind of left, you would not like to see vinyl in there, but if you want to change with the times and we need to sell something cheaper to sell it, you'd want to go to it. Well, it's not going to be allowed. You do realize that?
Yes.
Okay.
Other comments? Thank you, Mr. Beata. I appreciate your details.
All right.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And at this time, I'd like to move the agenda for respect of one of our business owners that has come for a appointment time. It is on 8B, new business. Mr. Cantrell, can I just move to it and address the business and move back?
If the rest of the board approves it, yes.
Are you all up here with that?
Move to approve.
Second. The item is 8B, discuss and undertake action on renewal certificate of compliance of Good Times Spirits and Wines at Fairview Boulevard. City Manager Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Commissioners Jeff McCord of Good Times Spirits and Wines has come up for renewal on his retail certificate of compliance for retail package store, and you have the information before you.
Second. We have approval and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. Moving back up to 7C, old business, discuss and undertake action on architect for Triangle School. City Manager Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. We move forward with the selection process to have an architect selected to prepare documents for the bidding process for the Triangle School. One thing, reason we need to do this or have a request that we do this, obviously, is to help keep this thing on, the Triangle School on the National Register, so we do things the right way. Also, the liability that the city would have if we didn't go this way, and also it would help with the bidding process. Don has been instrumental in speaking with Mr. Lowe, and I don't know if Don has any comments.
I didn't know if Will or any of the engineers would be here, but we were presented, and this is just general question, we were presented March of 2012, estimated budget for the Triangle School improvements. And that was a monetary presentation by our Griggs and Malone. And I'm just curious, is that something that's tying in? Is Griggs and Malone working with the architect? They came out with the original architect.
Well, that was a structural engineer that they come out with.
Okay.
This is architect.
I believe this was an estimate of what they thought it would take to get the building up to speed.
Yes, sir. It's a preliminary budget estimate, and it had items such as what, what you're asking engineer, I'm sorry, architect to review. My question in that is, are we paying an architect to get a bid package for the engineer? Or is the architect putting the bid package together for bidding?
The architect is getting the drawings together to bid out for a bid package to go out. He's, he'll be preparing the electrical plans, the mechanical plans, the plumbing and the insulation plan.
You didn't say HVAC?
Mechanical.
Mechanical, do it. Okay. So if we're paying an architect to do something that is a donated item, is there, is there a requirement for that before we go forward with the donated? Is that why?
Well, we still have to have the plans. All they are supplying is the materials and labor. They're not supplying the plan. So we have to have a plan for them to go by. So the architect will draw the plan, and once that bid package goes out, if he's going to be among the bidders, then he will, he will bid that section that he's going to do it for no cost. So when we get the bids back, it'll be, when you open the bids and you see this guy's zero cost and this one's $50,000. zero cost and this one's $50,000, you go with the low bidder.
So, do you have an estimated cost of what the architect is going to cost for us to talk to someone about giving us free material?
Well...
Or part of this conversation?
Well, you got the list of what the costs are hourly. And I don't have that, because I gave my copy to Mr. Hyatt, so I don't have it in front of me. But what he would like...